Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Weatherford City Council before we call our meeting to order. Going to call David Sliderup from Grace First Presbyterian Church. Thank you for being here this evening, sir. If you'd lead us in invocation, please.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Grace God, we just thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the wind that blows, the sun that shines, the rain that comes. For we just, as we look forward to the season of spring, may it spring new life in us, new hope in us as we continue to serve any way that you lead us. Lord, we just lift up this council to you. Pray that you will continue to guide and lead them in the ways of this town we love and we know as Weatherford, Texas. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. We'll wait just a moment for the, well, the clock just struck 6:30, so we'll go to item two. We'll call a meeting to order at 6:30 PM and announce that we have a quorum present. All council members are with us this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Matt Tiscus is going to lead us in these two.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you for the Matt Tiscus. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. O'Top.
I have none.
Counsel. Seeing none, we'll move to item five on the agenda, which is consent agenda items. Counsel, we have five A through five F. We can entertain those as a body. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out and discuss individually?
Yes, I would like to pull five F off and discuss it.
Okay, five F has been pulled by council member Robinson. Counsel will consider five A through five E as a body if y'all are comfortable moving forward with that. There's a motion on the floor for approval by Matt Tiscus, a second by Kevin Cleveland on five A through five E. Is there any discussion before we call for a vote on those items? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please, five A through five E. Passes five zero. Five F on the agenda is consider authorizing the city manager to execute an indoor local agreement with Parker County to provide library services for Parker County residents. Mr. Robinson, any questions or comments on the item?
Yes, I do. This is something we've looked at every year for the past 10 years that I know of, and the amount that the county has paid us has risen. And I'm going to talk rough figures, but from $40,000 that it stayed at for several years to $51,000 this year. And the library budget is just over $1 million a year. And I think that the issue that I have is that, you know, it may be that that's all the county can afford at this point. You know, I would certainly like to see that amount go up. But there is a clause in there that says that if we accept the $51,000, that the county residents have to be given the exact privileges of the citizens of Weatherford. And what I think I would like to see is if Mr. Ocardo could come back at a, and he could come on up. We may have, I may have some questions. I'm going to back up just a little bit. At the last time I asked, there was a greater part of the users at the library were actually county residents, more so than city residents. Is that still the situation?
Yes, I'm Chris Ocardo, Director of Library Services. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Welcome.
Yes, I ran the numbers yesterday, and the, as of yesterday, it was 53.8% of our users live in Parker County, but not inside the city limits. So. And that's, that's pretty, it ranges between 52, 55% in there, but that's pretty typical.
Okay. The, I did a little bit of looking. The city of Fort Worth for non-residents charges $50 annual library card fee. And, and I know that in the contract, the way it is worded, that if we take the $51,000, that we have to give the same privileges to county residents as our, as our city residents. And the issue to me is that the citizens of Weatherford pay 48 point, just over 48 cents per $100 valuation of property tax. But on top of that, the residents of the city of Weatherford pay over 28 cents of county taxes. And that's the same rate that the county residents pay. But the resident county don't pay any city taxes, obviously. So I don't know if there's any way to make it completely equitable. And I don't want to be ugly towards the residents of the county. I got a lot of great friends, a lot of great people that live in the county that, but I just think that they shouldn't have the same privilege. That if, if we could get that clause in the contract changed for the residents of the county, if, let me, if you're not a resident in the city of Weatherford, that there, and I don't know what the dollars. I might ask you to help work on that. But just for rough numbers, if we said that it's $50 a year for a non-resident, but a county resident gets it for, you know, a lesser amount than that. So it's not the same privilege that, that the citizens of Weatherford get, but it, it would be a better rate than a non-resident outside of Parker County. And I'm up for ideas. I just, you know, we're here to represent the citizens of Weatherford, and I think that it's, it's not a good deal for the citizens of Weatherford the way it is right now.
Well, well stated, well stated. This is, was something that was on the radar before I was on council and still on the radar. Any other comments or thoughts on this, a mechanism to let, to give our staff ideas to maybe bring us back an alternative plan or, or different ideas?
I think this is a perfect opportunity. Jeff and I have been on the council the same time, and this has always been at issue. This is our time where we go into planning our budgets. I think a well-versed conversation with the judge would be advantageous to try to see, we need substantial raise in amount we receive from the county to continue library services. I don't know how a fee would jeopardize our library share program, which I understood that would have a impact on how we have our library share services. So I think the, the start needs to be, we're at a perfect opportunity to start, we start planning our next budget to have those conversations about how can we get a more equitable agreement?
The, i- is the share program we're talking about, is that tech share?
It, no, it's a, it's our shared service agreement.
Sure, and I can get into all that tonight. If we'd like to have a more focused discussion on this issue, we could maybe do a work session and have a presentation.
Let's not get into that tonight. Due to agenda clarity, we need to stick to the specific contract. So Counsel, what are we asking for, a certain area of the contract to be considered for removal? Do we want to kick the whole thing back for consideration by Judge Dean of the Commissioners Court? What, what action or not action do we want to take tonight?
I, I think what I would like to see is that several times, this comes up for us to approve it, but their budget's done, there's nothing more they can do this year. Ours is several months away. And the timing of it just always makes it to where there's really no, I don't want to use the term teeth, but there's, there's never anything in it. It's like we keep kicking it down the, the road because of timing. And the, I don't have a great deal of confidence that they have the, the ability or the, that they're going to come in and make it an equitable deal and take up 53% of the budget of the library. I, I don't see that happening. I would certainly like to see the amount go up. But what I would like to do is, is before we sign this contract, ask them if they would be agreeable to strike that, that clause that says that we have to give them the same. And, and for you to come back to us, maybe we table it tonight, and you come back to us at the next meeting with maybe some, some facts and figures about the number, the potential dollars that it would generate, and maybe some recommendations of library card for county residents.
So what I'm hearing, if I can try to summarize this, is we're going to give them an opportunity to reevaluate the number that they're presenting or to strike a particular clause from the contract that's being proposed that would allow us to consider making up the revenue that they're not able or willing to make up through a potential charge to non-city of Weatherford residents. And so the ball would be in their court if we took that avenue to increase that amount or to remove that clause from the contract to allow us to have the opportunity to make up some of that revenue.
And, and I think when we present it, we need to present it as, you know, strike that clause and, and install a, whatever the dollar amount might be of a library card fee that would be an annual renewal for people that use the library.
If, if this is done in areas like Fort Worth and different places, if this model's already created, what are the effects you see from, or have you seen effects? Does it, does it really dramatically cut down the use from, from outside sources outside the city? Or does it not really have that effect and just people, it just helps with the budget? What are the outcomes that you see?
And you can certainly, I think Counsel McLeve will be okay if you need to gather that and wrap it up.
I, I can tell you, we did, when we discussed this before, and we had a work session on it a few years back. You recall, those of you that were on council. One, one that I know specifically that went from this taking funding from the county to, to going to charging individual residents was Denton, and they did experience a significant drop in the number of people who had cards. So I have numbers of the number of households that we have that are, that that county number represents, or that are represented in that county number. And I would estimate, you know, looking at the usage numbers, approximately the, the top 25% of those cardholders right now account for about 80% of that usage. So I wouldn't estimate much over that 25% being interested in paying. And I could, you know, we could look at different models for, if you take that number and say, project that out at, you know, $70 a year, $80, whatever, whatever you wanted to set, what that revenue would be, would it be more than what the county is providing now?
I, I would just want to remind us all that we are in, in the midst of a pandemic that's been a difficult time economically for all of our residents. So, I mean, you know, we might sit here and say, oh, $50 is not too bad. But that, that, that could be a significant amount of money. And in the end, you know, part of, I don't know, I'm, I'm torn on this because you want to say they ought to be paying their fair share for the library. But I think there's a part of us that says we need to also, we need to be good neighbors as well. And, and what does that look like? And maybe it is getting more revenue, revenue out of it. But in the end, we want people to use the library, and we want to increase literacy in our community. And if we're the ones bearing the greater burden because we have been wiser financially, shall we say, then maybe we're willing to, to bear that as a good neighbor. Just, just throw that out there.
And, and I definitely want to be a good neighbor.
And I didn't mean to imply you weren't being.
No, no, I, I understand, but, but the, our neighbors need to reciprocate. And, and, and when it becomes that we're taxing our citizens.
You're right.
To, to pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the balance. And I hear great points from, from not both sides, but both parties.
Right.
And, and there's a balance between being good neighbors. And then we have a responsibility to our taxpayers first. So they are the ones that have elected us to sit at this dice.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think, Counsel, this merits more conversation and probably more information from our library staff and Mr. O'Top and his staff. Is this a situation where y'all would like to consider tailing item? Or, okay, we'll need to take action to do that? Mr. O'Top, would we do that? Date certain or?
No, you, you could just, you, you don't have to.
Okay, so we just take no action on it?
No action.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody, does anybody choose to take action on five F before we move on? I know Mr. O'Top's got a comment.
I was just going to say, I know Mr. Robinson had asked for it to come back the next meeting. It may take a little bit more time to gather the information, so we'll, we'll bring it back.
Absolutely.
As soon as we can get that.
You know, in, in life, you often receive what you accept in, in negotiation and in, in contracts. And we have to make sure that what we accept and agree to is, is fair for our taxpayers and that there's a plan moving forward. This has been discussed, as I said, before I was on council, and it's, it's still being discussed. So I think this is a positive step moving forward to continue a discussion, hopefully in a healthy, healthy, healthy way. Y'all ready to move on? No action taken on five F. Item six on the agenda is regular agenda items. Six A is to consider and/or act upon acceptance of the annual audit report and the single audit report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2020, asked presented by Patillo Brown and Hill LLP, Certified Public Accountants. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dawn Brooks, the Assistant Finance Director. The Finance Department has completed the audit process for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020, and we are pleased to present you with the final reports for the fiscal year. You should all have four reports in front of you tonight. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the audited financial statements, and an award-winning report for the past 32 consecutive years. The Single Audit Report, which reports on our compliance with federal grant programs. The Required Communication with Governance, which reports on any issues the auditors have encountered during the audit. And last but not least, the Popular Annual Financial Report. This is a brand-new report that we've done this year. This accompanies the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by highlighting part of the audited financials, but takes a lot of the technical accounting terms out. This will also be submitted for consideration of a national award for financial reporting. Tonight's actions is merely an acceptance of these reports. But before we get to that, Paula Lau, our engagement partner with Patillo Brown and Hill, is here to discuss the results of the audit.
Thank you, Dawn. As Dawn mentioned, I am Paula Lau with Patillo Brown and Hill, and I am here to present to you tonight the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Just a couple of things that I want to provide you this evening are the results of the audit and, well, just a couple of financial highlights as well. I think we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Oh, yeah. Okay, there we go. The first thing I wanted to start out with, most importantly here, are the audit results. In our audit opinion, you will find in the larger of the packets that you have there, it's on page one, are, is our independent auditors' results. And basically, what we're saying in that particular letter is the, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. And our responsibility as auditors is to provide a, an opinion on these financial statements. Those financial statements have been audited in accordance with two different sets of auditing standards, one of them being generally accepted auditing standards, and the other set of standards are the governmental audit standards. There are some additional items that is auditors of governmental financial statements that we are required to look at in following those standards. And some of those include compliance with laws and regulations as well. And with all that being said, I am happy to say that we were able to provide an unmodified opinion this year on the financial statements. And that opinion is the highest opinion that can be rendered, as well as known as a clean opinion to most individuals, too. So congratulations there. As Dawn mentioned, too, the entity, the city did expend more than $750,000 of federal awards this year. When that type of thing does happen, it does kick off another set of audit that we have to do in looking at compliance requirements over a particular federal program. And lo and behold there, the program that we had to look at this year was the CRF funds or the Coronavirus Relief Fund. As we did look through that particular program, looking at the expenditures, making sure that they were spent on items that are they required to be for that program, making sure that they are not maybe purchasing hotels for someone somewhere, but making sure that they are appropriately spent within requirements. I'm happy to say we have an unmodified opinion there, highest opinion that can be rendered, as I mentioned before. So additional good news for you guys. As far as financial highlights, mainly what I'm focusing on here this evening are is the financial health of the city. Is the first slide you can see here is just a comparison of your net position for your governmental activities. Your governmental activities includes all of your governmental funds, debt service fund, general fund, capital project funds. And it also includes all of your capital assets, your long-term capital assets, buildings, infrastructure, and offset with a long-term debt, including serving as obligations, general obligation bonds, and things of that nature, as well as your net pension liability and your other post-employment benefit liability as well. So all of those things are included with in this particular net position calculation. And as you can see there, as, as a total, each one of these categories are, are growing and getting larger as, as a total for net position. Net position for your governmental activities for the end of this particular fiscal year was approximately 80, almost $84 million. So that is a growth compared to the prior year of $78 million. The next area that I wanted to focus on is business-type activities. This is a type of activities where customers are being charged for services, so to speak. You know, specifically more for the municipal utility fund. It's the largest portion that we're talking about here. And you can see growth in this particular area as well. You know, specifically, we can look at the unrestricted net position. You can see back in 2008, it was $34 million, and today it's almost $62 million. I know as you're going through the budget process, which it sounds like you guys are kicking that off pretty quickly here. I know one of the focuses is, is how much do we have in fund balance? As you can see here in this particular slide, what this is doing is focusing on all your governmental funds. As you can see, the largest portion of your fund balance is in the general fund of almost $17.5 million. Another larger portion that you have there is restricted for debt service payments in the future years. Just to kind of give you a breakout there. This particular area that we're looking at is, as you can see, as I mentioned, you know, the financial health of the entity is increasing over the years. And it's, it's great, especially in a year where we do, are in some unprecedented times. You're not sure what your revenue streams are going to be like as well. So this is definitely helps the entity be able to help other individuals as well and continue to move forward and spend those funds in appropriate places. As you can see, at the end of the fiscal year for 2020, you did have a growth there and an increase in unassigned fund balance. Now it's like 2.2 months of your general fund expenditures. As compared to the previous year, it was two months. But we do have, there's also a restricted portion of your fund balance that is set aside in accordance with the ordinance of the city for rainy day funds, so to speak. And that also is not included in that unassigned fund balance. That's great. But those are just some of the highlights and results of the audit as well. One of the things that I, as a part of the audit this year, those are a little bit different. In years past, we've always have spent a lot of time in preparing the caper, compiling a lot of the statements and schedules and things like that. That was completely brought in-house this year. The finance staff that you have, they took that piece over and did a fantastic job of compiling that information and putting it all together. So I want to bring that to your attention and compliment that group, too, on a fantastic job that they did this past year. So I really appreciate that. Not all of our clients do that, but that was one of the challenges they set up for themselves and wanted to take care of, did a fantastic job. So I appreciate everything that they did for us, too, just especially working in it during the pandemic and working in a different time. But I think the overall, the audit did go very well, go smoothly, too. So that's great news. Thank you, guys, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Ms. Lau.
I would like to bring your attention to the fact that not only did we do the, the Comprehensive Annual Report in-house, which was, I don't know if y'all understand this, which was a great feat. I mean, humongous feat. But our staff went the extra mile and prepared this small summary for those of us who don't want to read the entire, I can't understand that. But I wanted to commend the staff for the outstanding job that they did in, and especially going the extra mile to put this Popular Annual Financial Statement together for our citizens. So thank you to that entire team and especially Dawn.
Yeah.
Good job.
Well done. Thank you so much for making the trip here tonight and come back and see us soon. Any other questions or anything? I didn't want to, okay, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Staff is not asking for approval, they're asking for consider acceptance. I do see a motion on the floor by Mayor Proton for acceptance of the items, and a second by Kevin Cleveland. Is there any discussion on six A before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote this time. Six A, indicate yea or nay, please. Passes five zero. Item seven, the staff reports. Seven A is update regarding the Transportation CIP survey. Welcome, Marv.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Shab Marv at Capital Projects. So as promised, I've got an update on our CIP survey that we did through the MetroQuest virtual, the interactive survey. So just another advertisement for those watching online. You can go to this website, you can go to our city website, Facebook, any of the social media platforms, and get access to that survey if you hadn't done it yet. So the results to this point, the portal that we're able to go into and pull the data from shows that we've had 365 participants, so that's completed surveys, 994 visits. Now, it looks like a big delta, but the important thing there is that every one of those visits was an informative visit. So they can go through the survey, they can see the splash page with what the CIP program is. They can go all the way through the priority, priority projects and see that as well, whether they submit the survey or not. So that's a good thing to point out. The data points that we've gotten from this are over 4,000. So there's a lot of info that we've, we've gotten, and we still have almost a month to go. The other thing I wanted to point out is that compared to just a standard in-person meeting like we would do at our Transportation Advisory Board, the recent Thoroughfare Plan update, we would see maybe a max of 30 people attend, and even less than that provide us comment or input. We've got 365 inputs so far off this and almost 1,000 visits for information. So to us, it's a huge success, a big return on investment, so. Now, the first map where you were able to drag and drop icons, so this is the view when we go into the portal, and it's a heat map, so whether we want to zoom all the way out and see the entire county or zoom into specific spots in the city, this is useful to just pinpoint those areas quickly. I will point out that you, you'll see there, there's, we have several data points outside in the county. So as we go through those, it'll be important to note if we have safety issues or something, we can report to the agency that oversees that, that roadway. 580 comments in this page alone, that's the bulk of the, the feedback that we've got. That's written comments, so a lot of work ahead of us to, to go through that information. Now, the, the ranking system, we can view this a few different ways, and the roadway and the intersection rankings are similar in what this produces. So the most effective right now is by popularity. You'll see, we had over 1,200 data points, basically ratings, if you look at all the surveys combined with the top five. Now, they had an option of doing yes or no when they selected a priority, and that's beneficial if they're considering compare and contrast. So it's not just what are your top five, people were able to tell us what they didn't like as well. And that comes into play with intersections especially right now. You'll see on the far right, North Elm and Fourth Street, it's almost a wash, folks that want it and folks that don't want it. So we'll take that into consideration when we look at our projects, as well as 10-year versus 20-year project line. And there are comments that they provided on these as well. So we finished the survey with just some general qualitative data, I guess you could say. So user mode types, obviously, most of them is automobile, and this isn't exclusive. They could have picked two at a time, so not sure other could be, you know, wheelchair, it could be roller skates. Not sure until I get in the comments and see what they've got. But just wanted to point that out to you for data sake. Like we thought, Facebook is the most effective way to get this out. And I can actually see that whenever I go back to the, the first slide I showed you where it had months and it showed breakouts of how many people took the survey. We can drill down to, I think even the hour, I know the day, and I can see whenever the communication department put that on Facebook, and I can see the communication department put that on Facebook, and I can see the spike. So, it's useful for us to know that, and we'll keep doing that moving forward. Do you live in city limits? So, this is interesting, so we've got two-thirds that are, a third that are not, and then we've got a couple that are unsure where. The comment section, there's almost eight-hundred comments, so a lot of work ahead of us. Some of them, they're our general common theme, so I just wanted to share a couple with you. Traffic down residential streets to bypass main streets is increasing. I chose the projects and road construction elements as necessary to help thoroughfares for emergency responders. We have a lot of our fire and PD, emergency responders, have given us pointed data to what they think are issues. We need to keep up with the growth of our city better, and traffic, traffic, traffic. So, with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
The survey still open?
Yes, it is. So, we'll keep this open until March twenty-sixth. Just prior to that, we'll have an in-person meeting at our Transportation Board, so we'll take the results from that meeting, the survey closing out, and start working on the CIP.
Great presentation, any questions or comments? I'd be interested to know, kind of piggybacking on what we were talking about earlier, if you have the ability to differentiate the input you're getting from our residents versus people outside the city, I would certainly like to, if we're willing to, we're interested in everybody's thoughts and feedback, but to address the thoughts and the needs of our citizens first, since they're our direct customers.
Yes, sir, we can easily do that.
Anything else? Thank you, it's an excellent presentation. Item eight on the agenda, it's future agenda items, council, anything? It's true top.
Just the one noted with item five-seven that we'll bring back.
Okay, be fine. Item nine is work session items, nine A is to, council, can we continue on? If anybody didn't break, okay. Nine A is hold a work session regarding economic development. Brad Burnett.
Mr. Mayor, this is the council, Brad Burnett, Assistant City Manager. One thing I'm going to note real quickly is occasionally I call this the Weatherford EDC. It's really called the Weatherford Economic Development Board, but just general terminology, most places call it the EDC, so we will refer to it that way occasionally, so I just wanted you to realize that. The proposal being brought forward this evening was listed as a priority at our last council retreat. The request was for review economic development's role as it relates to policymaking and administration. This process, this proposal discusses restructuring of the current advisory board. The existing board structure is inherited from the Weatherford Economic Development Authority, which was dissolved in two thousand seventeen. It was an independent corporation. It also engaged all taxing authorities within the corporate boundaries to serve on the board. There were seven members of that board. However, a city-driven economic development board doesn't necessitate the same structure. We propose a smaller vested group that will provide vitality to achieve the economic development goals for building a strong community. This board will also provide review of policies, it will identify objective target areas, review incentive requests, and grant proposals, and recommend actions to the city council. This board will meet, will conduct meetings quarterly basis, but that frequency will be determined by the board. The current structure of the Economic Development Board has two members from the Weatherford City Council, then one representative from the Municipal Utility Board, from the Independent School District, from the Hospital District, Weatherford College, and Weatherford Chamber of Commerce. The city manager acts in an ex officio, non-voting manner and role in this. The proposed structure of the restructuring of the board would be a combination of three city councils slash utility board members. We would probably suggest two council members and one utility board member, however, that is completely up to the council to decide on that. One member from Planning and Zoning Commission, one member from the public, preferably with some experience in real estate, banking, some executive management, or some sort of professional capacity, a member from the Weatherford Chamber of Commerce in an ex officio, non-voting role, and the Weatherford City Manager slash Assistant City Manager in an ex officio, non-voting role. Just to let you know, we will continue to keep the previous board members appraised of any pertinent information, especially if it pertains to their expertise. This new board will begin on June first of two thousand twenty-one. The reason for that is we're trying to time this, so if there is a new council elected in May, or the existing council, you'll have the right board members on the city council part of this. The council will appoint all board members, and we're suggesting to a three-year term, and will make recommendations to the city council. Once again, this restructuring was mentioned in the last city council retreat. If this change in structure of the board is acceptable, we will bring back an ordinance at the next city council meeting to be approved. Is there any questions you have for me?
Questions for Mr. Burnett? Comments, discussion?
I have a question. I know what we said in the retreat, and this is one of my current retreat issues, is we've painted economic development with a broad brush, and we've sort of thrown a lot of projects in economic development that I'm not always sure are economic development-related. Do you have a methodology by which we're going to use to really define what is economic development, and compare that to what is financially feasible to do?
I think that's something that we'll always want to run by this board, especially, we're going to be setting policies for grants, for incentives, and items like that, and I think this board will be the one that would be a judgment on whether that's going to be something they consider important for economic development or not. But, yes, we always will look if it's financially feasible to do a project or not.
So, is there going to be more of a, because we've had these boards before, and we've painted economic development with this broad brush, is there going to be in this board more of a defined brush to say, these are really true, something that are attainable in economic development, and they are true economic development projects? Instead of just throwing, when we throw our retreat together, we throw almost everything in as an economic development.
What do you mean it's been painted with a broad brush? Can you explain that more?
Sure. We throw a lot of projects in economic development that sometimes we don't weigh what those financial aspects are when we're determining what it is our goals are during the, for example, you know, we've put the airport in economic development, or we've put the hotel convention center in economic development, or we've never really defined what economic development is as far as what can we do as a city, and what is a goal that we can actually attain within two years, three years, or what is a goal that maybe we should throw it out of economic development for right now as a future project?
So, I think to help with that a little clarity, number one, economic development will always be painted with a broad brush because it's a very broad scope of work. I think what you're focusing on is the specific projects, and so you're thinking, there's a wide array of projects, what are ones that we can really accomplish versus one we're wasting time on? Sounds to me like where you're going with it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's the...
So, to be clear, so to be clear, this board, so the direction of all of these projects are put forward to staff in our retreat by council as a whole. Staff then works off of council's direction as to which goals are important. Those goals, as they're being achieved, are brought before this new designed economic development board, and then you're, it's like any other thing, planning, zoning, any of the others, you get an opinion from that board on, this gets recommended basically to council to move forward. So, it's, the problem we're having with the board currently as it sits, is it becomes a reporting-type mechanism to outside entities that don't really have the same buy-in as what the other board makeups would look like, or this new board would have a direct buy-in from council citizens directly tied into, you know, taxpayers, things of that nature. And so, what we would do, my understanding is, we still engage the college, you still engage the school district, you still engage hospital district, all these, but it's more of a presentation-type, you know, it's more of, hey, we need your guys to come to a meeting and share your information and how you can be part of this, instead of making these outside agencies sit through things that maybe don't even affect them in any way. And so, what you find is you find a board that's kind of disconnected, because a lot of people are there just waiting for the opportunity that a third day comes to be part of it, and so it's really honestly not functional or fair to those that are just kind of, they're, all these people are really high-level individuals that are attending, and their time is very precious. And so, when you bring them in for just reportings on how many houses we built for the, you know, the last quarter, it kind of is not really fair to their time. So, I think by narrowing down the people we put on this board, it gives us opportunity to invite those people, but to be a little more clear with our direction.
And this, great points, I think this may be something that we're going to circle back around to at our retreat in May. I think, maybe, I'm speculating, what you're kind of looking for is, we're looking for some deliverables from this group.
That's exactly what we're looking for.
What can we expect, what's going to be the effect of changing the dynamics of this group? I don't know if we determine that, or if the group does, and that remains to be seen. But, I think what staff's asking for tonight is kind of the go-ahead to move towards forming a new group that they feel like would be, and we've kind of talked about, that would be more effective participants in moving forward in that process, and developing a more, not a reporting mechanism, but a hands-on mechanism, and being a part of the process to retain, attract, and help grow, you know, economic development prospects.
And to specifically answer your question, the clarity in those projects comes from our council, so I think staff will be very specific if given specific directions, so I think that'll come from us as a body driving that.
That's awesome.
Any other questions or comments? Good discussion, council. Mr. Burnett?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we can bring this back at the twenty-third council meeting for the ordinance change to restructure that official.
Anything else on nine A before we move on to nine B? Okay, nine B is to hold a work session regarding roadway impact fees. Mr. Hughes, welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of council, Terry Hughes, Director of Capital Projects. Want to talk just a little bit about transportation, transportation funding. I'm going to start with a very obvious statement. Weatherford is growing, and it's almost at that curve where it is exponential, and it's impacting a lot of different things. A number of years ago, two thousand and eleven in fact, I gave a presentation when we started our thoroughfare plan on our growth, our historic growth and our future growth, and this is a chart that I used. It started in eighteen sixty. I've garnered this information from various sources over a number of years, but started out in eighteen sixty, and we ran projections out to the year twenty thirty. With a blue graph on the bar represents Weatherford population, Arka County population. If you look over to the far right, twenty thirty, that blue graph, if I was to hit on that with an arrow, it would show thirty-eight thousand people. We are on par to make that thirty-eight thousand population by the year twenty thirty, and that's not very long. In fact, we will probably exceed the twenty thirty, the thirty-eight thousand. We'll probably be well above that, maybe close to forty-eight, forty thousand. So, what does this kind of growth have to do with infrastructure? Well, obviously, it puts pressure on our infrastructure, whether that's water, sanitary sewer, or in our case, roadways. All you have to do is drive down the roadways to see how that pressure is being applied to us. Roadways, just so you know, are extremely expensive to build, especially when you start adding new capacity to a system. This is a chart we used, it was developed by a city engineer based on quantitative data that we have for roadway costs. They range anywhere from fourteen hundred dollars a running foot for a six-lane road to now, just under a thousand dollars for a residential collector-type road. So, how does that relate to? You look dead center, you're going to see a type five-B minor arterial. Move over one, you're going to see that its capacity is seven hundred vehicles an hour per lane. That's a four-lane roadway. It costs six million, eight hundred thousand dollars a mile to construct. So, what am I talking about there? Well, in fact, that's a BB filter-type roadway. The last roadway we built that added capacity inside the city of Weatherford was an extension from Westover over to Dennis Road. It's two thousand feet, cost us two million dollars. Roadway, and the reason I'm bringing this up is roadways, adding that new capacity, those things we need to keep our mobility plan in place is very, very, very expensive. So, how do we fund various things when it comes to roadways? Look over to the left side of your screen, you're going to see maintenance, and it says overlays, rehabilitation of existing roadways and potholes. Those are the things that Manny and his crew is doing and doing very, very well. Those are existing assets. We maintain those, we spend a lot of money. That generally comes through our general fund, our ad valorem tax and sales tax. You look to the right side, you see capital projects. That is that new roadway I just mentioned, our added capacity, let's take Bowie Drive where we went from a two-lane to a four-lane road, that's added capacity, that's a capital asset that's added into our asset portfolio, that's why we divide how we fund those things. Congestion reduction is also a capital asset, so. So, capital project funding strategy, what we have used successfully in the past, obviously general fund, property tax, sales tax, we've used that on a couple of occasions, specifically council has set aside funds for the two roundabouts that we did in town, those were specialized funds come out of our general fund scenario. Another method that we've used in the past, the last time we've used a bond program was to actually build BB filter from Highway fifty-one over to Bethel roadway. That's normally done through tax bonds with voter approval. That was a voter-approved tax initiative. Just to give you a little bit of background about that, were that to happen today, a three-point-three-million-dollar initiative, a bond issuance would raise your taxes one cent. So, we are very, very cautious about moving that type of scenario forward. The council is always cautious. It takes a lot of citizen support to make that type thing happen, and it's normally pressed forward by citizenry. We use special funding districts, which this council is very well aware of, we call them TURs. We build that new road through areas where we know that there will be added value. In other words, if we build it, there are going to be some things that are added to the ad valorem taxes, and that bucket goes to repay some of the initial costs to that. A great example would be Caitlin Drive there beside the Honda dealership. That was a TURs-type program. Projects are also approved through NetCog and TaxDOT. One that you're very familiar with would be the bypass program that we have now. Those are federally funded, extremely hard to get, and very cumbersome to manage and take care of, but they are doable, and that is a tool that we have used and are using successfully. Another one that we have used is cost share with TaxDOT and the city, known as a pass-through toll program. We used that a number of years ago to actually fund about fifty-million-dollar worth of improvements, but they were specifically on state highways. We built the frontage roads, widened Highway fifty-one, built Jack Borden Way, all of that through a pass-through toll program. Those start out with, you have a specific price in mind, in that case, it was fifty-two dollars. We funded that money by issuing debt, then the TaxDOT repaid us, or is repaying us over a specific period of time. Those are extremely difficult-type projects to also move forward, and are almost exclusively done on existing state highways, not on our collector systems or things of that nature. So, there's only one tool really left, and it's what we refer to as what is known as a roadact fee, and that's really what we're here to talk about. Wanted to give you this background. We have been very successful with other tools. We think maybe the roadway impact fee would be a tool we could add to that, to the quiver of arrows that we're using. What is a roadway impact fee? It is one-time charge assessed to new development for a portion of the cost related to specific capital roadway improvements. And I'm not going to go into how those are determined, because there's this whole study behind that, but it is a way to extract funds from developers as they move forward. So, it kind of answers one of these questions that we get in capital all the time, is who pays for growth? Well, if you don't have an impact fees, the community pays for that growth, using the tools that I just listed for you. There are other tools that are not quite as... There are other tools that are not quite as, as easy to use, but for the most part, it is community-driven impact fees. If you move toward an impact fee, the community will still support that, still use the tools that we have available, but the developer also pays a proportion of that toward any capital improvements that they have impacted or needed in an area. So impact fees, in fact, were authorized by the state in 1887. I found it unusual that the law was actually sponsored by Texas Home Builders Association. The reason they did that is this also serves some, defines some problems which is referred to as proportionality, and can't make a developer pay more than what his proportion is sharing is. Using impact fees automatically settles that argument, because you've done all the pre-existing studies to get you to that point. This is allowed under chapter 395 of the Texas Government Code. It sets out the precise methodology to develop the program. It has an adoption procedures that you have to use, and it has administrative rules for the program. So we're at that point where I would like to invite Chad Marbit up to go over some metroplex cities, how they are applying the fees themselves, how it relates to one another in citywide, and some of the costs associated with that. So Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Hello again. So we wanted to give you a picture of what it looks like in the metroplex and how other cities similar to our side, or maybe adjacent to us, are dealing with the infrastructure demand. So the target comparison cities you see there fit one of those two measures. Now, when we looked at these cities, we had to make some assumptions when we were looking at building permit. So the assumption we would make is a 2,500-square-foot home. I also wanted to note that there are some cities that pay double impact fees. If they get their water from Fort Worth, they're paying their own impact fees plus the pass-through fees from Fort Worth, so that's why you'll see it's a little more expensive in some places. Now, as Terry showed, the population growth that we're dealing with, this depicts the residential permits from our planning department for the last three years. You can see we went from 183 to 288 in just two years, and that trend's going up. So demand on the infrastructure requires solutions, so what are other cities doing? This map shows every city that's over 4,500 population, and whether they have impact fees, whether they have water, wastewater impact fees, and whether they have all three, roadway, water, and wastewater impact fees. So no impact fees is basically because there's not a demand for growth. The place is either built out, or it's so remote that it's not seeing the same growth as the rest of the metroplex. So that's just under a quarter of all those cities. Weatherford, it's hard to see on this map, it's highlighted in yellow there, we have water and wastewater impact fees, so we fall within less than a quarter of those cities as well. Now, over half of all cities have all three impact fees, and you can see by the green areas, it makes sense when we look at where the growth is happening in the metroplex. So if we focus on just those comparison cities, this is a stacked visual, shows you the total cost for a single-family home. Now, water's in blue, wastewater in green, roadways are in red, and then that white color at the top is your building permit fee. We thought it was appropriate to include that in this. As you can see, Weatherford is, for lack of a better term, the cheapest among all these cities. You'll also note that we don't have a roadway impact fee. And you compare $5,600 for a 2,500-square-foot home to someone like Waukesha Hatchie at 6,700, or Middle Oathen at 95, you kind of get a picture of where we stand across the metro. If we look at this more of a realtor view, a cost per square foot for that 2,500-square-foot home, you're looking at $2.25 a square foot. It's the same trend that we saw on the previous slide, but it gives you a better feel for when you're building a house, what it costs. Now, depending on the size of the home, it's, the change is de minimis between these because it's scalable. So this, this goes up or down depending on the size of the home, but we wanted to focus on residential because it's apples to apples. It's easy for us to relate those, and then deeper in the study, you'll see that your residential homes help drive that standard unit cost when we're looking at roadway impact fees. So with that, we'll go from residential, and you're probably wondering how this applies to commercial. So if we look at just roadway impact fees, and we take Waukesha Hatchie as a comparison. So their example is a single-family home with around $1,000 per vehicle mile fee and the standard vehicle miles, the cost for that home is $2,800. That's your roadway impact fee. Now, you apply that to a commercial building, and the fee is just shy of $70,000. That's because it's all based on trip demand. So this gets really in-depth in the study, and it's more than we want to get to, get into tonight, but I wanted to give you this, this screenshot of kind of what to expect when you're looking at this. It's all traffic demand-related is how this is built out. So I'd open up for any questions you have on the data presented before Terry comes back up.
Any questions?
I've got questions on the proportionality piece. Which one of you guys would like to?
Or if you have, we'll finish the presentation, then we can circle back around if we need to. Is it okay with you all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, be great.
Mr. Mayor, council, where we are at is the road forward, the path forward to what we need to accomplish an impact fee, you have to do a complete study where you would define what roadways need to be built within a specific area, what those cost, and how you extrapolate the fee that's associated with it. And I've just given a general outline here of an impact fee study. It has service areas, it defines land use and growth projections for about 10 years. It then develops the capital improvement plan, that's a CIP plan that is different from the CIP plan that we're working on now. While they overlap, they're two different type plans. Development cost per service unit calculations, that's how you develop the fee. You then develop policies, you have public hearings, and then ultimately, all comes back to the council to either adopt an ordinance establishing an impact fee, and then you also set that fee based on recommend from the plan. So that's kind of where we were, we kind of wanted to get to that point. I can tell you, we've gone through this entire presentation and this, this information with your Transportation Advisory Board, they fully support moving forward with, at minimum, the study, there is citizenry, and the reason I'm bringing it up, there is citizen support to move forward with some form of an impact fee based on growth and growth. Certainly can try to answer your question on proportionality if you...
So in the past, when we, when we're talking with developers about proportionality and their pieces of road, we seem to focus on the areas directly around them, and not the overall. Is it my understanding that this is kind of going to spread out that responsibility to some degree? So instead of focusing on the immediate adjacent streets that they're going to be impacting, the impact fee will take on the approach of all of our projects adopted within the plan, and that impact fee will be spread out amongst all the development? Is that a fair statement?
Well, it certainly doesn't relieve them from if there's a street that's needed to actually service their, their development, they had to build a connector street or something. But it, and then you would take some of that fee away, there's a methodology of taking some of that away, and then applying the, the impact fee back to the overall general plan. I guess that's, that kind of...
You asked a question better than ask it, so. And that's where I was going with, was what does it do, in answer that, what does it do to the actual street? Because usually the conversation is more about what...
You're talking about adjacent streets and things of that. Those would still be required from a functionality point of view to actually service that deal, but there is a way, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? There is a way that some of those costs are deferred, it's two miles away or a mile away, that's on our plan to build, so some of that money's going to go toward that.
I think this is a great comparison here. You look at, we have water, we have wastewater and water impact fees, and you see how well our utilities have performed in the recent light of what we've went through, and it's because of planning ahead. And I think, you know, one of the common points you hear are streets, why are we not, why are we not prepping and getting ahead? Well, you can't get ahead without money. If you wait until for them to get here to where you have the money, you can't get ahead of it. So I think at least studying this and seeing where it leads is a great option.
Counsel, the staff is asking for approval, not formal, but to move forward through this process. Is there anybody that's not comfortable with at least going through the impact fee study and then coming back? That would require action for us to move forward with that at that point, but is everybody okay with now with them proceeding through the process?
We have a sense on the timeline of how long it'll take to...
Well, we would propose bringing a contract back. We have a firm in mind that is also working with water department and wastewater department. They're updating their plan. We could kind of pony off of that and maybe use some cross-information there. Having said that, we would propose bringing a contract to you at the next council meeting, and we would start almost immediately. We're looking at about 10 months, could go as long as 12, but 10 months. Remember, I have to have my one CIP, thoroughfare CIP plan in place, and then we will overlap it with the capital CIP plan.
And I'm sure it doesn't have to be said, but that you do have to weigh out, there is a breaking limit. So as you start adding impact fees, there's a point in time where you're going to push people out of the city into the county, so...
Certainly that...
...of that.
There's a threshold on both sides, really, if you go too far, and if you don't go far enough. It's a hard balance, I'm sure.
And the law only allows a maximum of 50% recovery of those costs, so there's a threshold that can be passed on.
Okay, council, any other questions or comments on 9B? Kind of look forward to seeing you. When you said six months, right? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
We'll bring the contract back.
Oh, let me put my mask on.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for your, both you gentlemen, thanks for your information, feedback, strong attitude, and both your presentations, so thank you for that. Everybody ready to move on to item 10? Item 10 on the agenda is citizen comments on non-agenda items. Anybody from the floor tonight? Non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to item 11 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Motion on the floor by Matt Tiscus for adjournment, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any closing comments before we call for a vote? Let's vote on it. Any k, y, or nay, please? We're adjourned 5:00 at 7:31 PM. Everybody have a great evening. Thanks for your service.
...city under one purpose, one goal, and that's to build a strong community.